That's how I looked at them. I thought, I think.
Yeah, they're hard to look at.
This is too small.
I should, I should, I've had them, maybe a week ago. I should have made a point of saying they're in the office because they were there like Thursday. But it's okay.
We're back.
We're back on?
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, Ellen.
But the one that I was commenting on had a new driveway or something that they were putting in so I can look at the plan and know which one that the well, so I don't get to look through all of them, I just have to find the one and say, well placement, question mark. And you can do frontage, question mark.
Yep.
And then, I don't know what the third one is. My, it's too small for me to look at it with my phone.
Okay.
But if nobody minds, we can make those comments after we're done.
Yes, yes.
And fill out the paperwork after we're done.
Yep. Okay. Public comment number two.
So. Under Board Business, just a couple of go-bags. Last week I had asked about the rec department laptop and somebody was going to look into it.
Got some Marissa questions. See where they are in the rotation in the budget, so.
That's a Marissa question? She's handling block size?
Does Marissa know that?
I don't think so. So we need to ask her directly. She's been so busy, I didn't even get to it with her. So, I'm sorry, I'll ask her.
No, I'm just, I'm confused why it would be Marissa doing that. Like, I don't understand.
She knows the budget for the computers and where they, where they stand as far as what has been fulfilled and what has not. That's why I would ask her.
I think the replacement schedule was held in that office, that's why.
Okay. Is that where it should continue to be held? At some point?
I don't.
I would say why not, to be honest with you. It must be, we don't have another alternative, but.
Right.
It was coming out of the end. I know we got a few computers last year under the ARPA funds.
Right.
But I don't know this, who got what and where the extra.
Right.
Terminals are, or if there are any.
So is it on me to go ask? I'm just trying to find out so I can get it done.
Well, I can ask her, I honestly, she's just.
Either Lori or Susan, however you want to do it.
I'll, I'll ask her.
In the recreation budget, under computer, they have a dollar.
They have a dollar.
So that's all that they have in their budget.
What are computers going to die, so?
Yeah, so it's going to have to come, my point is, it's going to come out of another budget or it's going to come out of this one and they have to not do something.
Yep.
Or there may be two computers somewhere, one of which is not in full use.
Right.
That's the other way to go.
Right.
It's computer, a dollar.
So that, that kind of goes back down to my question. I thought we were going to talk about this another time after the DePamia had looked at it, but back on the second page on the bottom, Poxon Recreation, Telephone and Internet, 61.3% of the budget's already gone. Why? The telephone and internet, but they only have a dollar for computers. So I'm just kind of curious why telephone and internet would be so high. And I don't know, but I'm reading, you brought up the recreation, it's right there.
That's probably their bill, their monthly bill.
Like you said, it's 61.3% of their budget.
Yeah, okay.
That's a lot.
Yep.
Just curious on that.
And then the other thing was when we met for our special meeting last week, we talked about monitoring wells and then trying to reach out to Sanborn to see if we could get, have we had any luck with that?
Sanborn Head.
Sanborn Head, to see if we could get one up here.
By the daycare zone.
Right? But we were going to wait on the status of the grant, is that right?
No, I did reach out to them if you're talking about.
The grant doesn't cover those wells.
This is a separate site investigation. I did ask them because of the information that was brought forward, is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Yes.
I relayed that information to them. They had a couple of questions like about that water line, where it was. I talked to Graham today, I told him as best I got from that conversation. They also said there's, the children's center is a public well.
Is or not?
It is, and as such it has been tested and never showed any exceedance.
Oh, that's good to know.
So they, they just had a couple more questions which I, and they were going to bring it to their other people.
All right. Thank you, I just wanted to circle that up on that.
You could, if you talk to them in the future, you could have them contact me because I know where those water lines run.
Okay.
So that's why we're not looking at the site.
Yeah.
Because Fred Ramey put most of those water lines in.
The newer ones.
The original ones that came from the high school, all the way down, down here before they changed it the other way, then they capped it. Now the water goes this way instead of that way.
Right.
But the same water line is still there.
Up to this, to the church and.
Correct.
Nichols and Stone Hall, right? So that's what I told them, because I remember that from the agreement with the church at the time, but I didn't know whether they capped the original or what.
Okay. All right. Public comment number two. Rick.
My comments on, they're on the audit.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm Rick Russman, Beach Drive. Is on the audit. To me, it's extraordinarily unusual to have the town not have its audit done. And if none of you really thoroughly understand, I haven't seen it obviously, but if, if you thoroughly understand it, that's great. If you don't, there, at the very least, the town should get to have an executive summary with bullet points about what's good or what's not good so that the town can understand. Because a lot of the audits tend to be in, written in form that is very, very archaic and difficult to understand, to have to plow through that. So, I mean, it should be a learning experience for, that's what the purpose of an audit is really, is to tell you what you're doing right, what you're doing wrong, and so on. So, and if the chair's going to sign it, I'd be almost inclined to say something to the effect of, without confidence, sign without confidence. It allows you, because it sounds like nobody really understands or knows the way you're, at least you're framing it. If you do, that's great and that negates what I'm saying, but it's just the town certainly is in a position, I don't want you paying these folks, but certainly either have, either that or have them come before you and so they can answer questions.
We said we want to ask the auditors to come and speak with us to explain the 2023 audit.
Okay, that's what I'm, what I'm talking about, because you should have an opportunity to thoroughly understand it.
Yep.
That's clear, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just, come on up. So just to tidy that up, while the auditors are here, you're going to ask them that question, right?
Yeah, either I am or.
Somebody's going to ask.
What's tomorrow, Tuesday?
Oh, you won't be around.
No, but I'm, depending on when they get here, I might be able to pop in first, but if not, I can be here the next day.
Yep, they'll be here until Friday.
Yeah, so they're going to be here, yeah, for the next three days, so if I don't get to come in tomorrow, I can come in Thursday.
I will touch.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I'll touch base with you, I'm coming in later tomorrow, won't be here till 10:00, but I'll check in if I get the chance before you do.
And, well, I have a chance to maybe be here at 9:00 and then leave from here.
Okay.
We'll see.
Okay. Stacy?
Stacy Dion, 30 Morning Show. Can I get some clarification about the HR administrator job? Because I thought when you read the job description, it had said 40 hours a week?
No.
But then, but then I think you asked to clarify and it said 40 hours a month. So is this a consulting position or is it being added as a position to the town?
It's not being added, it's being amended, because right now we have a finance slash HR person and we're taking HR away from that person. So we still had the HR position, but now we're going to try and give it to either another person or a consultant. We haven't made that decision yet.
So two part-time positions?
Yep, instead of, yeah. The other one's full-time, the finance office is still full-time.
So we are adding a quasi-part-time position?
No, it's the, it's the responsibilities that were with the.
She knows exactly.
I know exactly. I'm asking if we're adding a position to the town or is it a consultant position?
We don't know the final answer to that at this point.
That's, that's fine.
We're testing the waters.
And, so, you know, my next question is, where's the money coming from for this position?
From the person who's not making the same amount of money as the finance HR person.
Okay. All right, no, I just, it's a, it's a question because, you know, we see that and I'm going to ask those questions, so. Okay, thank you.
Yep, since HR was removed from that function, the salary's different and the delta will be able to cover this position.
Yeah, I hadn't seen, yeah, I want, I was just curious because I hadn't seen that in any minutes, so I just wanted to get some clarification.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no one else in the audience, so I'm assuming we're done with public comment. All right, correspondence, applications, and purchase orders. So we're into the orange folder now. Okay, all right. So the first one is for Kingston perambulation.
It's been done, correct?
Well, but this is only, this is only with the town of Exeter.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Because that's one of the towns that we, right.
Right. So this is a letter, it's on Town of Exeter letterhead. Says to Exeter and Kingston Town Boundary Perambulation, pursuant to notice by the Town of Exeter to the Town of Kingston, the undersigned met the property marker on Kingston Road Route 111 at 11:00 a.m. on the first day of May 2025 and proceeded to perambulate the lines between the towns and renew the marks and bounds thereof and established the same as follows. And it describes it. It says, "We, the undersigned, have this day perambulated the town lines from bound to bound and found them correct." And so our highway agent has signed it. How about that? Okay. There is, there's a signature block for, for me, there's one for the Exeter Town Manager and for the Exeter Select Board Chair, so I guess I'd be looking for a motion for me to sign this.
So moved.
Motion by Ellie, second by Ellen, discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous. I'm going to do, no. We'll do this. Oh, but then I lose my list. The Lake Host invoice, which we just discussed and we approved payment of, there's no place to sign, although it's on the back, it says Select Board, but how about if I just say okay to pay? And this is per the vote that we took earlier.
Correct.
I'm sorry, it's the, it's the invoice for the matching part of the grant for the Lake Host program in the amount of $2,500. Next one is an exemption for solar.
They have five for, I think it was elderly.
Oh, it's elderly.
But they should not approve for elderly business for the first time.
Well, but it's checked off for elderly.
It changed, you look where she's got it here, does not follow five for elderly.
Oh, okay.
So they took, she thought for elderly.
Okay. So it's just for solar. Okay. I realize that you don't all have this in front of you, but it is for 13 Wadley Point Road in Kingston.
We don't usually vote on those.
No. But there are signature blocks here for all of us, so I'm going to go ahead and start signing. I'll pass it. Solar exemption, yep. Oh, once we all sign it, it'll come back here. Next one is an abatement form requested by Eversource and we.
Are denying it.
We have, we have a letter from our, our utility assessor.
What is Eversource?
Power company, like Unitil.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they cover part of, part of Kingston. Actually, we have all three power companies in this town. We have the Co-op, we have Unitil, and we have Eversource. So our utility assessor has written us a letter dated May 30, 2025 regarding the Eversource abatement application. Dear Select Board, we have received and reviewed the 2024 abatements requested for Eversource. We recommend that the abatement be denied. Eversource has presented no information or appraisal to support their request and Eversource relies upon the Department of Revenue Administration's value for its abatement, which has been found not to be reliable as a valuation of public utility property by the Board of Tax and Land Appeal. Should the taxpayer provide new information or if the company has misinformed the town as to the inventory property, we will consider those issues when and if they arise. Should you have any questions, please contact us. I can hold that for now. So.
I move that we deny the request for an abatement.
Okay.
For Eversource.
Motion by Ellie, second by Ellen, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I would have, we should, upon recommendation of the assessor.
Correct. Okay. So upon recommendation of Sansusi Associates, and that's spelled S-O. So on, on their recommendation, we made that motion and took that vote, which was unanimous, so.
Nothing to do.
And this says, by signing, this is a deny, it says deny the abatement. Okay. I'll start this there. Okay, we have a, an abatement. All right, we have an abatement request here from our assessor, Katie Walker. Abatement application 2024-2, owners of the property Gregory and Janet Bartlett, Bartlett Farm Revocable Trust, location is 13 Half Moon Lane. Okay. So, due. The above property owner submitted an abatement application for 2024 and the basis that the data we have in our system about the outbuildings on the property for 2024 was incorrect. The subject property is a 1975 conventional style, single-family dwelling on .4 acres located on Half Moon Lane. As part of the abatement process, the assessing department made an appointment with the owner to review the property and exterior inspection was completed. During the inspection, corrections were made to the data and the outbuildings have been removed. Due to the above reasons, we recommend that the assessment be granted and the property's assessed value reduced for the 2024 tax year from 664,600 to 651,000 dollars. If granted, this would result in an abatement amount of $226. The abatement application is attached. And there are places, oh my gosh, oh, look at all, oh, these are, those others. Thinking to myself, how can it have that many signatures? Okay. Folks, have any questions on this? No? Good to go? All right. Date is 2/25. Start that one down there. Okay. All right, we have a couple of appointments to public office. Both of these are for Heritage Commission and one of them is for Connor Von Genep. He and his family are the ones who bought the old Harlow property across from All American Assisted Living and they're in the process of trying to save as much of that property as they can and that will eventually be their homestead, so. He's also an electrician. But he's been, he's very interested in, in the heritage component of our, of our town and has been attending Heritage Commission meetings and was interested enough to put his name in, so.
It's as an alternate.
It's as an alternate because all of the seats are currently filled, so it's a, it's a, for Heritage Commission, alternate member to expire on March 31, 2028. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Ellie and Peter. All, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And thank you Connor for, if you're listening and watching, for, for stepping up to the, to the commission.
That's a good thing.
And the second one is for another alternate member, Stephen Sousa, also an individual who has been doing a lot of work for the Heritage Commission and he was the one doing all the videotaping of the 300th celebration and has been doing a lot of articles that have been published and out on Facebook and on the town's website. Does a nice job, so. So for Steve Sousa, again, thank you for, for volunteering. It's for Heritage Commission, alternate member to expire on March 31, 2028. May I have a motion by Ellen, second by Ellie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous. There we go. And the last one in here is from this board.
It's a letter in support of Tammy going forward with another Moose Grant for the books.
Oh, for the books, for, for the.
They need us to say that the books belong to the town.
Okay. So this is addressed to, it's dated June 2nd today, addressed to the New Hampshire Department of Cultural Resources in Concord regarding the Conservation License Plate Grant Application. And this is for Town Records, Volume 4, 5, and 6, which covers dates from 1814 to 1936, 1828 to 1838, and 1828 to 1848. Purpose of this letter is to confirm that these documents are publicly owned by the Town of Kingston. Thank you for your consideration for this worthy project. Any questions on this?
Great thing to do.
Great thing. And, I mean, we all saw the results of the, of the first books that were done, it's really phenomenal. And it gets scanned, so it's now electronic as well, which is really great. So that's the, I'll just go back in here. In your packet, you'll also find a copy, latest copy of the Kingston Lake Association newsletter, which has all kinds of good stuff in it, so feel free to review that at your leisure. We have lots of minutes to approve. May 19th, first of all. There was one amendment that was added after the fact and it was a, a, a small paragraph to, to discuss the, the apology that was made by Susan and myself at the beginning of the meeting. It didn't make it into the minutes and I felt that it should be, so. It doesn't have the verbatim. If the board feels that it needs the whole thing verbatim, we can do that, but that's not typically how we do minutes. So if you think that that statement captures what we did, then we can go with that. So any, any questions on those minutes?
Move that we adopt the minutes of May 19th as amended in both public and non-public.
Okay, motion by Ellie. Second by Ellen. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? May 23rd?
So move both.
The 23rd, we're missing the non-public because I needed some clarification, which I didn't get back. My notes weren't good about exactly what went on with the counselor salary, so.
On the what?
The counselor salary, I wasn't sure what was.
The what?
Decided?
Decided.
No.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that with Abby and Marissa, but neither one of them had time to get back to me yet.
Oh, okay.
I'll write those down.
So let's approve the minutes then for the public portion of May 23rd and 27th.
So moved. I mean, second.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so discussion. In our, in our, on our agenda, it says May 19, May 23rd, and May 28. And I'm looking at stuff in my packet that says May 19th.
May 23rd and May 27th.
It should be the 28th.
And a 27th isn't on here either, nor is the 19th. So I don't know what we're doing.
The 19th.
This one is in the packet.
Yeah, that's the non-public for 9th. Oh, did I?
It's not, it's not on here. Oh, it is, I'm sorry. It is. It is.
And I think I just put the wrong date on the top of the 28th.
So it's not the 28th.
I'm pretty sure that's supposed to be 28. It was a Friday, right?
Right.
Oh, it was our special meeting?
Yes. I changed the footer, but I think it's, I did that right.
Okay, so up, so on the, on the minutes, the draft minutes that say May 27 should say May 28. Okay. All right. So Ellie, you just made the motion to do the public, approve the public portion of the, which set?
23.
23, May 23.
Correct, because you don't have those non-publics yet, I'll bring them up next.
And 27. The 28. Let's, let's do 23 and 28 together, they're both public meetings.
Well, I'd like them to separate because I have to abstain from one of them because I wasn't there, sorry.
No problem, no problem.
All right, so, so we'll do the May 23rd minutes.
Yeah, as printed.
So motion by Ellie, did we have a second? Second by Lori. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I'm going to abstain. So, sorry, opposition, no abst, so, four in favor, none opposed, one abstention. For May 23rd. I was absent from that meeting, so, I mean, technically I can vote for them, but I think it's appropriate for, just to abstain.
So now I'll move to adopt the May 28 minutes as printed.
27, 28?
No, 28.
The date, the date was corrected.
Motion by Ellie. Second by.
Second.
Lori. No.
No, just public.
Just public. And it was motion by Ellie, second by Lori.
For the 23rd, what was the amendment?
No. No, I.
He amended when it was the 19th.
Yes, and then the other two are now.
Correct.
Okay. So all in favor of adopting May 28 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous.
That's it.
That's it for the minutes.
Right.
All right. These need to go back in here. All right. Do we have? No non-publics. There's no non-public to do? Lori, anything non-public? We can do that. And on, and on the, on.
I would like to say load it out.
I can look at them quickly, I'll know which one it is, it's the lot line adjustment. So I would request that we do this one first because these two, I'm accusing myself of both of them. Okay. Okay.
Gotcha. Oh, I see.
Well, if I'm going to leave and come back, you guys will either.
No, it's perfect.
Review the planning boards before the planning board, and come to the other boards first. Look at the actual planning.
No.
No.
Right.
Other boards and committees that they should take an interest in before they hear.
With regard to the C&amp;J leasing, is this, this looks vaguely familiar, like the...
They're looking to expand, isn't it?
No, they're looking to put a well, a road into their well.
Oh, okay.
That's all they're looking to do.
Oh, this is the one that's under construction now?
Correct. 125.
Okay.
Yeah, down on the corner.
Yep.
West Shore Park Road, 125 out there.
Yep.
They want to put an access road into their well. So, we got to find their well, and that's what they're looking to do.
Yeah. They want to put an access, that's it. An access well to monitor wells.
Drainage and utility.
Is that the well right there? There's all this WWW.
So, maybe it's the wide gravel access road to well, water line to be installed.
That's what they want, they want to build that road.
12-foot wide gravel access road to well.
Yep. That's what they're looking to do.
But that's well within the bounds, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is the property line.
Yeah.
It looks like there's, there's trees all around.
Yeah, that's like in between the trees.
And this is, it's coming off of their parking lot as it is. There's a little hammerhead for turning around.
Yep. That's what I'm seeing, well access road.
All right.
Yep.
It says, well, it says road, but it's really a driveway.
Yeah, well, it's...
It's just an access way.
Well, depending on how they're making a building, it could be considered...
Well...
Or something going out of the well, I don't know. Maybe they're going to have a hookup for the fire truck there. I don't know.
Is this the...
That could be.
Where's it, is it?
The people on 125.
Okay, got it.
What they're looking to do, this is here, this is a road they want to put into their wells right there.
Oh.
So, they want to construct this well access road.
Where's the entrance? Right there. Okay, got it.
On 125.
Yeah.
It's right where West Shore Park Road.
Yeah, 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 in that, that poor little house right there.
Right, right, right. Okay, I, I don't, I don't have any comment on this one. How many, how many board members does it take to follow the plan?
Come on, think about like the old road maps, right? And people would just follow them up and throw them back, see, because they could never told them.
Yes.
C&amp;J leasing.
I'm saying no specific comments. Did, did you sign them all?
Come here, come over here.
Okay.
Someone?
Okay, this is the lot line adjustment. Oh, you're sitting out, Peter?
Sitting out, actually.
Okay.
Get Brian, we know.
Okay.
Where are we at? Is this on Church Street? What are we doing? Where's the address?
Okay. So, it's on, it's on Mill Road, 60 Mill Road.
Okay.
Here's Mill Road. So, there's this property, and then there's this property, which is landlocked.
I see.
It looks as though they're proposing to eliminate that lot line and create this lot line like that, which makes, this parcel used to have, or currently has, 500 and something feet of frontage. And this, the lot line adjustment creating this, this revised lot over here, their front edge is on Mill Road also, but it's only 45 feet. And that's...
So, is this the current, I mean, this whole thing is the current thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would add a decision.
Hmm?
I would add a decision.
What did you say you wanted?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you saying anything.
Oh, oh, we can't hear you either. So, what is the current? What's the current? This is the current of this?
Yep.
Of this piece right here?
That landlocked piece, yep.
And then they want, the lot line is going to do this to it? What's that? Is that stays?
That stays.
That stays. So, this is going to be this new piece?
Yep.
Okay.
That looks pretty convoluted to me.
It's so convoluted.
And, and they're trying to, they're trying to utilize this landlocked piece, which currently has no access.
Right.
Is this the Mill Road?
Yeah. So, how does that give it access?
Haven't they given it in front of, in front of the board before, haven't they?
Well, because this then...
I don't remember this.
This then is part of, is part of this, and these new lot lines then make this, it's very convoluted.
So, this is on, by the same person? This lot and this covered lot, and this is part of it?
These lines aren't making sense.
Well, first off, no. I mean, they need ZBA.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Why? Why? Because you can't create a...
You can't create a substandard lot, and you need 200 foot frontage.
235. Okay. That would be a ZBA decision. Who, who's this right now?
It's, am I supposed to say the name?
No, 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 I mean, it doesn't go to, these lines don't help me.
It's in the letter.
It's a trust, it's in a family trust.
So, that's all, it's just, you know, I'm not going to make a comment on how they do it together, otherwise that needs ZBA approval.
And that, that's what the karma would be.
That was, that was my comment, is that...
Requires ZBA approval to...
There was one that was kind of similar that came before the board. I guess.
They have had creative requests on how boundaries get adjusted for frontage.
It's too bad, it's not another way to accommodate.
Well, there probably is, but it's probably more expensive.
It could be.
So, I'm saying road frontage not sufficient.
And so, they're trying to do it to be able to get to that landlocked piece.
Well, they're, yes.
Yeah. And merge the lot to the lot. Maybe they'll look it up, but it needs ZBA approval or an adjustment. And then there's one more, one beyond?
Yep.
The one that I, that I think the well placement needs addressing.
No, variance.
A variance, excuse me, thank you.
From, from the zoning board of adjustment. At least that's how I see it.
And what's this, was it this one?
I believe, I believe this is the...
It's Church Street.
I believe it's the old Christie property.
Property, yes, it is a Christie property.
The one that goes down to the lake.
Yep, yep. Make them to HDC for approval. And that stuff, right, that's the ZBA.
So, existing houses.
H8. The well's supposed to be 20 feet away from driveway. Looked it up. Kind of like, well, maybe they changed it, but the well's supposed to be 20 feet away from driveways.
Okay. And the scale of this is...
In the driveway.
Oh.
Isn't this the whole, well, I don't know, it's a turnaround thing?
No.
I don't think so.
No, isn't, isn't...
Couldn't tell, because it's all, this is the existing path, the old road bed. Yeah, so this is the driveway. So, this says, proposed 12-foot wide paved gravel driveway and a 4-foot gravel shoulder, but I don't know where it goes. So, that looks like this. I'm going to look up the... This is the approximate proposed driveway. So, I'm going to look it up to see if the road radius. I'll look it up. I'm going to look it up. And I've got my work. And if it's measured, I'm fine, I have no problem with it. But you have to understand, I was looking at it on my phone.
So, the other question that I had when I looked at this is that, I mean, it does, it lists all the buffers, DES buffer, Shoreland buffer, which goes out to here, and goes like this, and clearly, some of the development is within that, so I don't know if they have...
But this is the property that also has disputed frontage down there on Bounderby Lane, right?
I don't know.
Yes, we've, we've looked at that before.
Okay.
HDC looked at this and approved the plans.
From the design.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And, and yes, but they were also looking at all the setbacks and everything, too. And nobody raised an eyebrow about...
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I would like to, if the board's okay, at least I would like to put a comment in here saying, or a question, does, does it meet all the setback requirements?
Right.
From Shoreland and Wetland.
Yeah, we don't have time to look at all that stuff, but we're...
We, yeah.
Yeah.
Just leave it at that.
Yeah.
So, Ellen.
You're fine.
Yep.
No, can't find the, I was looking at it before, so, no, I'm fine with that, that sounds good.
But what about the well?
Well, I can't find the, and you can say including well.
Well, we can put it as a general question.
Yeah. Well setbacks, okay. Just a question.
Please check, oh, please check well setbacks.
Yeah, confirm well meets appropriate setbacks or whatever you need to do.
Our well setbacks compliant. Okay, anything else?
I think there was some lot line adjustments with this, too, I'm trying to remember the whole thing.
Really?
I think so. There was a switching of, yeah, there was.
Yes.
Which has already happened?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's done already, because like, it says it's not a survey, so it shouldn't be.
Well, that's the other issue, it's, I'm not, I'm not sure that the...
This is not a survey plan?
Says this plan is not a survey.
Oh. Oh, it probably doesn't have to be for an EDU.
Right.
But there's all kinds of...
But there's other issues.
Development going on.
Right. Correct.
Do we want to ask? Should it be? Is that appropriate for us to ask that?
I think so.
What, for a survey?
Should it be? I don't know.
I think it probably should be surveyed.
Can I ask, I don't know if you can record.
I don't think so.
Well, I don't, I don't think we record these, though, do we? The EDUs? I'm just going to put a question mark about that. I'm going to say, should this be a survey plan?
Yes.
You'll be at that meeting, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay.
Not to worry.
So, you can address these if, if there are questions about that. Okay, so, we got three comments on that. Anything else?
The comment sheet.
Oh.
Comment sheet.
Of course, you'll have to read my scribbles, but... Okay, Peter, you can come back.
This is the next meeting, June 16th, 6 o'clock, Watershed Committee at 6:30. That's not typical meetings, they're coming at 6:30.
Yep.
Yeah, we're starting.
As an appointment.
We're starting all our meetings at 6:00 now.
Right, but then I saw Watershed Committee, 6:30, I'm like, is that a secondary meeting?
No, they're coming to, to us, yes.
So, I've lost my agenda in all this pile. I think we were at the end, weren't we?
We, yes.
Okay.
You were just going to comment on the, yes, you did, you did the link, yep.
So, our next meeting is in two weeks, on June 16th, at 6 o'clock. If we don't have any non-publics, we'll, we'll do board business, or whatever we need to...
Correct. Good.
Anything else from anybody?
What are the chances? Because they said if we don't have any non-public, I, but what are the chances?
That depends on whether you're out of town.
Exactly. I won't be.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 9:13 PM.
The board.
We don't need a moment.